All right, well, good afternoon. We usually say good morning, but we're gonna say, we'll say good afternoon today. Happy New Year!
Happy New Year!
Aren't we blessed? The beautiful weather today. I think God's smiling on us today. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 1st, 2023 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. We're glad to have you all. This is our first wearing-in ceremony for all these elected officials in the new courthouse. So what do y'all think about it? So, how many? How many people is this your first time in the courthouse, in the new courthouse? Wow, good, lots of, lots of guests. Well, we're glad to have you and, and happy New Year. We're glad to be part of this very special, special day. At this time, I would like to welcome Pastor Jim Manford of New Life Church, and he is going to lead us in our invocation, and then our pledges will be led by Caroline Eads. And if you will please stand, I want to remind everybody to turn off your cell phones.
Could you bow your heads with me in prayer? Psalm 65:11. "You crown the year with your bounty, and your carts overflow with abundance." Lord, we welcome this new year, 2023, by humbly welcoming, welcoming you into these chambers. We recognize that those seated before us, those who will be seated in places of service, have been placed here by you, and we're grateful. We recognize that the law is enacted and the decisions made in these chambers come from the moral foundation of you and your word. And as we just read, we know your heart for your people is merciful and good, filled with bounty and abundance. And so we ask that as we begin 2023, you would grant these servants of yours humility and patience as they seek answers to solutions, that you would give them wisdom from heaven, and that you surround them with good and wise counsel. Lord, we ask for your protection and good health in this coming year. And as we pray for Denton County, Lord, make us a shining city on a hill, exemplifying your values of justice and mercy, bounty and abundance. Now, to him who is able to keep you from falling and to present you before his glorious presence without fault and with great joy, to the only God, our Savior, be glory, majesty, power, and authority through Jesus Christ our Lord, before all ages, now and forevermore. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, Caroline?
Good afternoon. Please join me for the, the American Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Pastor, and thank you, Caroline. She was wondering if people would know the Texas flag pledge, and I said, well, this crowd will know the, don't worry. So they, y'all, y'all did a great job on that. So, all right. Cheryl, do we have anyone registered for any public input for items not listed on the agenda? We have none. All right. We will go ahead and proceed in our agenda to... Get my eyeglasses on here. To 13E. This is item 13E in our agenda. This is a ceremony to administer the oath of office to the following elected officials who were elected on the November 8th, 2022 election. Number one, Andy Eads, County Judge. Two, Steve Burgess, District Judge, 158 Judicial District Court. Three, Brody Shanklin, District Judge, 211th Judicial District Court. Four, Brent Hill, District Judge, 367th Judicial District Court. Five, Derba Jones, District Judge, 467th Judicial District Court. Six, Paul Johnson, the Criminal District Attorney. Seven, Kimberly McCrery, Judge, County Court at Law Number One. Eight, Laurie Ragland, Judge, the County Criminal Court Number One. Nine, Susan Pill, Judge, County Criminal, County Criminal Court Number Two. Ten, Forrest Beadle, Judge, the County Criminal Court Number Three. Eleven, Chance Oliver, Judge, County Criminal Court Number Four. Twelve, Cody Waddell, Judge, the County Criminal Court Number Five. Thirteen, Dave Jan, Judge, the County Probate Court Number One. Fourteen, Christopher J. Everett, Judge, County Probate Court Number Two. Fifteen, David Trantham, District Clerk. Sixteen, Julie Luke, County Clerk. Seventeen, Cindy Yates Brown, County Treasurer. Eighteen, Kevin Falconer, County Commissioner, Precinct Two. Nineteen, Diane Edmondson, County Commissioner, Precinct Four. Twenty, Alan Wheeler, Justice of the Peace Number One. Twenty-one, James DiPiazza, Justice of the Peace, Precinct Two. Twenty-two, James Kerbo, Justice of the Peace, Precinct Three. Twenty-three, Harris Huey, Justice of the Peace, Precinct Four. Twenty-four, Mike Oglesby, Justice of the Peace, Precinct Five. And twenty-five, Blanca Oliver, Justice of the Peace, Precinct Six. All right, so let me give a little bit of housekeeping for everybody. You're welcome to take your oath of office on a Bible. If you brought a Bible, I brought a family Bible, like I brought my family Bible, you're welcome to do that. If you would like to use one that the county has, we have a county Bible here, you're welcome to do that or not use one. So, we have a tight house, and we're so glad to have everybody here. I would tell you that we have the 2020 room. If you just came in, I'll just re-announce that. We have the 2020 room right to those double doors. If y'all wave, Brad, kind of right over there. So we have seating and refreshments over there as well. So you're welcome to, to make your way over there. So, as we go through these different 25 elected officials, if you would like to get up and go stretch your legs and give your seat to some of the other parties that are here, you're welcome to do that. We will not take offense if anyone wants to step out and offer your seat. And you're also more than welcome to stay exactly where you are. So it's whatever makes you feel comfortable. So, all right, we will go ahead and start with the administering of oaths. Caroline?
Do good.
Good. You'll please stand here. Bobby, you're gonna be in the other mic.
Okay.
Ginger? Ginger, right here. I got her right here. Always right here. No pressure, Bobby.
Not at all. Good evening, good afternoon. It's a blessing to be in Denton County Courthouse, administrative courthouse. Glad to have all you here. Okay.
Let's do it.
Eads family? Judge Eads, would you repeat after me? "In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas..."
"In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas."
"I, Andrew Eads..."
"I, Andrew Eads."
See, I call him Andrew. I don't do Andy, so that was hard for me. I'm sorry. Let's do that again. "I, Andy Eads..."
"I, Andy Eads."
"...do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will faithfully execute the duties..."
"That I will faithfully execute the duties."
"...of the office of County Judge..."
"Of the office of County Judge."
"...of Denton County, of the State of Texas..."
"Of Denton County, of the State of Texas."
"...and will, to the best of my ability, preserve..."
"And will, to the best of my ability, preserve..."
"Protect..."
"Protect."
"...and defend..."
"And defend."
"...the Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"The Constitution and laws of the United States."
"...and of this state..."
"And of this state."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Okay.
We, we have two for commissioners, so, yeah, so, okay, here we go.
"I, Andy Eads..."
"I, Andy Eads."
"...do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"Solemnly swear or affirm."
"...that I will not be interested..."
"That I will not be interested."
"...directly or indirectly..."
"Directly or indirectly."
"...in a contract with or claim against the county..."
"In a contract with or against the county."
"...accept such contracts..."
"Accept such contracts."
"...or claims..."
"Or claims."
"...as are expressly authorized by law..."
"As are expressly authorized by law."
"...and accept such warrants..."
"And accept such warrants."
"...as may issue to me as fee of office..."
Repeat that in smaller sentences.
"As may issue..."
"As may issue..."
"...to me..."
"To me."
"...as fee of office..."
"As fee of office."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
"I now pronounce you County Judge again."
You gotta have bite, bite-sized oaths, bite-sized. I wanna, I wanna thank you, Commissioner, for doing that. Bobby is a dear friend of mine and a mentor. Don't run off, dear friend and mentor, and known him my whole life, and I just really appreciate her. She's our most tenured member of the court. Let's give Commissioner Mitchell a big hand. I wanna, you know, as I, this is a family Bible that was my great-grandmother's, who settled in Lake Dallas before it was Lake Dallas, over 100 years ago. And it is such an honor to get to, to be here to serve as County Judge and get to do it again. And I want to thank my mom and dad, who are watching from home. Hello, mom and dad, they were watching. I want to thank my, my family, Ginger, Caroline, Everett and Addison, and Anna Eads here, Everett's girlfriend. And I want to thank our work family, all the Denton County employees that really make the magic happen. Thank you so much for all that you do, 365 days a week and 24/7. They do such a great job. And let's give all the county employees a big hand. They do such a great job. And my personal family, my work family, and I want to thank all the friends and supporters who helped make this a reality. So, I thank y'all. It's gonna be an exciting term, and I hope it's a lot more traditional than the last one. Then we'll do a quick family picture as part of, and then... All this paperwork. All right, our next one is Steve Burgess, Judge Steve Burgess. All right, let's get that. There you go, Judge. All right. "I, Steve Burgess..."
"I, Steve Burgess."
"...do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"Do solemnly swear or affirm."
"...that I will faithfully execute..."
"That I will faithfully execute."
"...the duties of the office of District Judge..."
"The duties of the office of District Judge."
"...of the 158th Judicial District Court..."
"Of the 158th Judicial District Court."
"...for Denton County, Texas..."
"For Denton County, Texas."
"...of the State of Texas..."
"Of the State of Texas."
"...and will, to the best of my ability..."
"And, to the best of my ability."
"...preserve, protect, and defend..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"Constitution and laws."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States."
"...and of this state..."
"And of this state."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations. While he's signing, I want to give a big shout-out to one of our county attorneys. John Felt was at the TCU game last night and was here cheering them on, cheering the Frogs on, and was here this morning. So, I talked about those dedicated county employees. Thank you, Judge. Congratulations. All right, next is Judge Shanklin. All right. All right. Perfect, perfect. Terrible story.
It's a terrible story. Chance, no.
Thank you. All right, here we go. "I, Brody Shanklin..." "I, Brody Shanklin." "...do solemnly swear or affirm..." "Do solemnly swear or affirm." "...that I will faithfully execute the duties..." "That I will faithfully execute the duties." "...of the office of District Judge..." "Of the office of District Judge." "...of the 211th Judicial District Court..." "Of the 211th Judicial District Court." "...for Denton County, Texas..." "For Denton County, Texas." "...of the State of Texas..." "Of the State of Texas." "...and will, to the best of my ability..." "And will, to the best of my ability." "...preserve, protect, and defend..." "Preserve, protect, and defend." "...the Constitution and laws..." "The Constitution and laws." "...of the United States..." "The United States." "...and of this state..." "And of this state." "So help me God." "So help me God." Congratulations.
Yeah, so very, very quickly, for those that are watching that could not attend, and just thank you so much for my family, for supporting me. It is not easy being married to an elected official a lot of times, so thank you to my family. Thank you for all the citizens of Denton County. This is my third term. I do not take that for granted. Thank you so much for keeping me in office, and I promise I will do my very best. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Brent Hill. And his oath is gonna be administered by Judge Doug Robeson of the 393rd District Court.
Please raise your right hand. Or wait a minute, are there some family members who wish to come up?
Family's a little, little slow. Bonnie, get up here. You might as well be family.
Just let me know. Everyone here? Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. "I, Brent Hill..."
"I, Brent Hill."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will faithfully execute..."
"That I will faithfully execute."
"...the duties of the office of District Judge..."
"The duties of the office of District Judge."
"...of the 367th Judicial District Court..."
"Of the 367th District Court."
"...for Denton County, Texas..."
"For Denton County, Texas."
"...of the State of Texas..."
"Of the State of Texas."
"...and will..."
"And will."
"...to the best of my ability..."
"To the best of my abilities."
"...preserve, protect, and defend..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend."
"...the Constitution and laws of the United States..."
"The Constitution and laws of the United States."
"...and of this state..."
"And of this state."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, Judge Hill.
They're much prettier than me, so we're gonna go ahead and put them in front of me.
Let's get it, y'all, in front of the mics.
Okay, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
This is my first time.
Come on, come on up, everybody. Come on, Mama. Don't be bashful. There we go.
I have so much to be thankful for. I have my family here, Maddie, Lindsay, my mom and dad, who have come here from Bandera, Texas, my brother, who's flown in here from Oregon, and just to be able to share this with me, and I, I'm just forever thankful for that. And I, and what each and every one of them, especially this one and this one, put to help me do a dream that I never thought was possible, but they never, they never shirked it. They just, they persevered. I have so many friends and family who are here. Bonnie, I have the Prestons, the McCollums. Matt, I mean, there's so many people who supported something that, that, you know, they never questioned it. They were there for me, and, and so many people in this room that I am forever grateful for. And I pray that, that I'm worthy of the trust that has been stoned me, and I thank God for this opportunity, and I thank all of you. Thank you very much.
We gotta make it official. All right, and then Judge Robeson, if you'll come sign this court order, that'd be great. All right, next is Judge Derba Jones. I remember when you had all the, the stack of...
Yeah, yeah, we're going with the, we're going with this one this time. Pastor, yes. One more.
Y'all come right up here. Yeah, there we go. Y'all, y'all, there we go. Yeah, y'all, allow it for the picture. Perfect.
One more.
It's all good. This is your time. Hello?
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
All righty, y'all ready?
Ready.
There we go. All right, "I, Derba Jones..."
"I, Deborah Jones."
"...do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will faithfully execute the duties..."
"That I will faithfully execute the duties."
"...of the office of District Judge..."
"Of the office of District Judge."
"...of the 467th Judicial District Court..."
"Of the 467th Judicial District Court."
"...for Denton County, Texas..."
"For Denton County, Texas."
"...of the State of Texas..."
"Of the State of Texas."
"...and will, to the best of my ability..."
"And will, to the best of my ability."
"...preserve, protect, and defend..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States."
"...and of this state."
"And of this state."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Y'all come up here for the picture? Anything, Judge? Do you just want to say anything, Judge? You're welcome to.
What I would like to say is thanks to those who have watched me along the way. I've met a lot of great people, a lot of people in this room, and I am honored to continue to serve as Judge of the 467th District Court. Thank you for your support.
All right, next is Mr. Paul Johnson, our district attorney. Here he is. I like it when a Bible looks like it has some miles on it.
It does.
That's good. That's a good sign. All right? Yeah, y'all squeeze in. There we go. "I, Paul Johnson..."
"I, Paul Johnson."
"...do solemnly swear or affirm..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will faithfully execute..."
"That I will faithfully execute."
"...the duties of the office..."
"The duties of the office."
"...of Criminal District Attorney..."
"Of Criminal District Attorney."
"...for Denton County..."
"For Denton County."
"...of the State of Texas..."
"Of the State of Texas."
"...and will, to the best of my ability..."
"And with the best of my ability."
"...preserve, protect, and defend..."
"Preserve, protect, and defend."
"...the Constitution and laws..."
"The Constitution and laws."
"...of the United States..."
"Of the United States."
"...and of this state..."
"And of this state."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations.
I've been working for my life, and I have ten secrets, really, secretly. I'm just gonna say this. It's a privilege and an honor to serve Denton County. This is my fifth term. For those people out there thinking, if you're running, if you're not, I haven't decided. All right, so this could be a real comedian, don't know. I gotta tell you, I have got a great office. Without them, I can't do it by myself. I'm really proud to introduce my wife, who, I got her the whole Bible this time. Everybody else has held it, but... Everybody else has held it, but not her. My grandson, my first grandson, Noah. Cynthia. Paul, my oldest, and my youngest, Pierce. And again, y'all have a Happy New Year, and it's a great time. And I just want you to know up there, we're leaving. We got five seats. Come on down.
All right, you heard it here first. All right, Paul, and then we'll sign your oath. All right, next is Judge Kimberly McCary. Let's give her a big hand. Can we do, hello, Mr. Carter? Yes, we have some more seats right down front here. Hello, Commissioner. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I Kimberly McCary.
I Kimberly McCary.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Judge of County Court.
Of the Office of Judge of County Court.
At Law Number One.
At Law Number One.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I'm so thankful for a faith that saves, for a family that I absolutely adore, a job that I think is just an absolute privilege. I love going there every day. I love my Denton County family. I'm seeing so many of you smile back at me. We have a great place to work, and I thank you for this privilege.
All right, next is Judge Laurie Ragland. All right, let's give her a hand.
Hello, Mike. You're good.
Okay. I Laurie Ragland.
I Laurie Ragland.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Judge.
Of the Office of Judge.
Of the County Criminal Court Number One.
Of the County Criminal Court Number One.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's get a picture right here. All right, everybody, come on, guys. Let's get up here, get a picture.
I just want to thank my family and introduce them really quickly. Because my dad is here, my beautiful daughter is Ellie and Blake, my brother and his family, and my adorable little nephews. They've been such a support for me, as well as many other of you. I just wanted really quickly to take the opportunity to thank Judge Eads and the other commissioners for taking a chance on me with my appointment. I could not have been more honored or privileged to be put in this position, and I hope I make the citizens of Denton County very proud in my first term as an elected official. Thank you.
All right, next is Judge Susan Peel. You all good? I Susan Peel.
I Susan Peel.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Judge.
Of the Office of Judge.
Of the County Criminal Court Number Two.
Of the County Criminal Court Number Two.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, my friend.
Y'all come up.
Thank you all very much. I did want to introduce my family. My husband, Kerry, my daughter, Andy, my son, Christopher, who is following in the family business and just completed his first year of law school. We're very proud of him. His girlfriend, Alex, and Andy's boyfriend, Lance Corporal Gabriel Kirkendall, who's here on leave from Camp Lejeune. He's a United States Marine. My son Ethan couldn't be here today. It is the privilege of my life to serve the citizens of Denton County, and I think the voters forgive me that trust. Thank you.
Susan's very proud of that young man. All right, Judge Beadle. Here we go. Speaking of TCU, speaking of TCU, I was thinking about y'all last night. All right, here we go. There we go. All right, I Forrest Beadle.
I Forrest Beadle.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Judge.
Of the Office of Judge.
Of the County Criminal Court Number Three.
Of the County Criminal Court Number Three.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of the great state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right.
Very quickly. Oh, Commissioners, Judge Eads, and of course, citizens here in Denton County, thank you again for entrusting me with this great responsibility to be a Judge of County Criminal Court Number Three. I've been working for the county, going back all the way to Bruce Isaacs, and Paul Johnson is one of your prosecutors since two thousand and five. We've grown our family here in Denton County, and I will not let you down. I absolutely love this job. I absolutely love the Veterans Court and all our treatment court programs. The Commissioners and the citizens have continued to support in this county. So thank you very much again, and I look forward for a good four years. Thank you.
All right, we got four more, five more seats down front here with Judge Peel. So if anyone wants to come have a seat, you're more than welcome to. All right, Judge Oliver. Chance Oliver. There's going to be two Judge Olivers here in a moment, so we'll do the first one. What a crew here, I like it. Everybody's looking sharp. All right, y'all ready?
Ready.
I Chance Oliver.
I Chance Oliver.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Judge.
The Office of Judge.
Of the County Criminal Court Number Four.
Of the County Criminal Court Number Four.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'll be very brief, guys. These are my kids. If y'all, I mean, they've grown a lot since the last time I was up here, four years ago. Some of them are even outgrowing me. But of course, my wife, Blanca, my oldest son, Angel, my youngest son, Max, my middle son, Micah, my other son, middle, other middle son, Samuel, and my only daughter, Gabriella, right here. Thank you, guys, for everything. We appreciate all the support, looking forward to a great four years, and I've loved the time that I've done so far, and just appreciate everybody that helped me get here and keep me here. So thank you very much.
All right, next is Judge Kobe Waddell. There he is. Hi. How are y'all doing? There we go. Do you want to use a?
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes. You did it. You're doing it good.
You're doing great, and I bet you get a C-O-O-K-I-E in the other room.
He's already had two.
Oh, okay. All right, well, good. He's had my share.
Okay, ready to stand still? Let's be a statue.
There we go. You got it. There we go. There we go. All right, we got it. I Kobe Waddell.
I Kobe Waddell.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Judge.
Of the Office of Judge.
Of the County Criminal Court Number Five.
Of the County Criminal Court Number Five.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Do you want to say anything, Judge?
There we go, yeah. You're not going to get one. Thank you, everyone. This is my wife, Kelly, my daughter, Nora, and my son, Charlie, and I am so thankful, would not be able to do this job without them. The sacrifices, those of you that are elected officials know the sacrifices that your families make for you to do these jobs, and I am so thankful and privileged to do this job. This is my third term, and. This is my third term, and I am just so pleased and privileged to serve the residents of Denton County and the citizens. All right. Thank you so very much. God bless, God bless you.
All right. Judge David Jan. And his oath is going to be administered by our retired Judge, Judge Bonnie Robison.
I David Jan.
I David Jan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of the Statutory Probate Court Number One.
Of the Statutory Probate Court Number One.
Of Denton County, Texas.
Of Denton County, Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the great state of Texas.
And the great state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God. Going to be very brief, and I'd like to thank my wife, who has supported me through more adventures than I can count and care to, care to think about sometimes, and I forget to do that every time I talk and an opportunity to thank her. I'd like to thank Judge Robison for the example she set as the Probate Court Number One Judge, and for the many years that I served under her as the Associate Judge of her court. I'd like to thank the friends and family that we have upstairs for being here, and for all of my supporters throughout the county that helped me get where I am today. And I, New Year's Day is kind of interesting for me, because twenty-eight years ago, I was getting off of C-5 in Mogadishu, so this is kind of like. An upgrade.
All right. Judge Chris Everett. There we are. All right, let's give my hand. And the Everett family. It seems like we just did this. Y'all come gather around. Y'all can come over here. Perfect. Everybody gather around. I like that tie. All right, here we go. Here, hi. Good to see y'all again. All right, if you please raise your hand. I Christopher John Everett.
I Christopher John Everett.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Judge of County Probate Court Number Two.
Of the Office of County Probate Court Number Two.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge. Just want to say Happy New Year, everybody, Happy 2023. I wanted to thank my wife, Beth, for being here with me by my side, my five kids, Kennedy, Hannah, Caleb, Tyson, Sammy, my mom and dad, my father-in-law and my mother-in-law, my sister, my brother-in-law, and my two, my niece and my nephew. So I want to say thank you, Judge Eads, thank you, Commissioners. It's been a wonderful start to be able to celebrate this with my brethren on the court, and I thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to serve as your Presiding Judge of Probate Court Number Two, and I look forward to the next four years and the opportunity to serve our wonderful Denton County community. Thank you, everybody, have a great 2023.
Very good. All right, now for our District Clerk, David Trantham. Here we go. I, David Trantham.
I, David Trantham.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of district clerk.
Of the office of district clerk.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Keep it short and sweet, just wanna say thank you to the citizens of Denton County for this opportunity of a second term. I feel like we made a pretty good strides this first four years I was in office, and I certainly couldn't have done it without the help of Commissioners Court and Judge Eads, along with the wonderful staff we have at the District Clerk's office, they've been amazing, and I look forward to the next four years, I certainly appreciate it again, and I hope everybody has a happy 2023 as well. Thank you all.
All right, now for our county clerk, Julie Luke. Where's Julie Luke? Let's give her a big hand. Hello. I do. It's fun to watch all these kids grow up. All right, listen, all right, here we go. I, Julie Luke.
I, Julie Luke.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of county clerk.
Of the office of county clerk.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Let's do a picture.
I just wanted to say I'm so grateful for the opportunity to continue to serve the greatest, the greatest county in the best state in the union. I've loved Denton County. To all our new officials, I wanted to say if you need anything, please come see me, and we're here, we're always available for you, use us as a resource, so thank you.
Okay, so don't run off. So Clerk Luke has asked, we take a quick pause. She has to swear in her deputy clerk, Ashley, who does all the official record-keeping here. So we're gonna take about a two-minute pause in the action and let her swear in, and then we'll proceed. So if anybody wants to stretch their legs, get a cup of coffee real quick, it'll just be, take just a, just a sec. All right. Our next is our county treasurer, Cindy Yates Brown, let's give her a big hand. And who is this in the best dress?
This is my granddaughter, Bailey.
Hi. All right, here we go. I, Cindy Yates Brown.
I, Cindy Yates Brown.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of county treasurer.
Of the office of county treasurer.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's do a picture here with the family.
So thank you, everyone. I'm beyond blessed to have continued to serve in this capacity. This is my seventh term, and I started... I don't think I could have ever have dreamed that in 1986, when I started as a senior in high school, that I would be standing here before you today at 54, serving as my seventh term. But it is my true north. I believe public service found me, and I have embraced it and have loved every day and every moment of my life. Thank you all for your trust and for your friendship, and I appreciate your support.
All right, and next is county commissioner for precinct two, Kevin Falconer, and administering the oath of office is outgoing and retiring Commissioner, Commissioner Ron Marchant. Let's give Ron a big hand.
Anybody else?
Yeah, yeah. The whole group.
Kevin, this is an honor.
Thank you.
Quite an honor to do this. And you'll find it's an honor to serve in this capacity, and I...
Thank you, Ron.
Pray that the Lord will bless you and bless this county for you. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kevin Falconer.
I, Kevin Falconer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of county commissioner, precinct two.
Of county commissioner, precinct two.
Of Denton County.
Of Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Got more. Okay. I, Kevin Falconer.
I, Kevin Falconer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will not be interested.
That I will not be interested.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
In a contract.
In a contract.
With or claim.
With or claim.
Against the county.
Against the county.
Accept such contracts.
Accept, accept such contracts.
Or claims.
Or claims.
As are expressly authorized.
As are expressly authorized.
By law.
By law.
And accept such warrants.
And accept such warrants.
As may issue to me.
As may issue to me.
As fees of office.
As fees of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you all so much. I'll be brief, but there are a lot of names here. My wife, Susan, obviously, my three daughters and their husbands and kids, Michelle, our oldest, and Shane, and their four kids, and then Melinda and Delvin, and their son, Nathan, and then my youngest, Megan and Tate. And it's such an honor and a privilege to take over this seat, and I wanna especially thank Commissioner Marchant for his mentorship and all the help that he's given me. He, he's actually the reason that I'm in this situation. Thank you so much, Ron. But no, I'm looking forward to serving you all, and thank you so much, Judge Eads, for all that you do as well, and the rest of the commissioners, thank you so much.
All right, if you'll go have a seat and get to work. All right. All right, we're gonna present this to retiring Commissioner Ron Marchant for all his 30 years of service to Denton County. Let's give him a big Denton County hand. All right. And our next office holder, who's been re-elected, is Commissioner Diane Edmondson, and Judge Jim Johnson is going to administer the oath.
Thank you so much for asking me to serve in this role. It is an honor, and thank you for your years of excellent service, not only on this court, Commissioner Edmondson, but also many years before, in your role as elected official and mentor to many elected officials, including me. I'm thankful to be here today with your husband, Bob, your pastor, Jim Mann, and if you will raise your right hand, I will administer the oath of office. I, Diane Edmondson.
I, Diane Edmondson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of county commissioner.
The office of county commissioner.
Precinct four of Denton County.
Precinct four of Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the great state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And this amazing state of Texas.
And this amazing state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And we have one more. I, Diane Edmondson.
I, Diane Edmondson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will not be interested.
That I will not be interested.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
In a contract with or a claim against the county.
In a contract with or a claim against the county.
Accept such contracts or claims.
Accept such contracts or claims.
As are expressly authorized by law.
Are expressly authorized by law.
And accept such warrants.
And accept such warrants.
As may issue to me.
As may issue to me.
As fees of office.
As fees of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and bless you.
Where's my hubby? Okay, this is Bob, I think he was already introduced by the judge. Let me just thank all of you who are here from precinct four. I'd like to thank all of you who supported me. It's been four years, and we're ready now for another four years. I'd like to especially thank, right now, all the veterans who are here. I've heard several of our elected officials who are veterans, and frankly, without y'all, we wouldn't be here today doing this, so thanks so much to all of you. I couldn't have done this without my husband, Bob. By the way, that was his Bible that we used to swear me in, he reads it every day and twice on Sundays, so I was really glad to have that. And of course, our pastor, Jim Mann, who was with me the first time I was sworn in, and so, Jim, I'm so glad you could be with us again today. I'd like to thank all the voters of precinct four who put me back in office, but I especially would like to thank the mayors who are here today. Virtually every mayor in precinct four endorsed me for reelection, and thanks to all of you who are here today, I see so many of you, and I appreciate your being here. And lastly, I would like to thank our Robeson Ranch delegation who's here today, that's my home community, they're my neighbors, they're my friends, and they're my biggest supporters, so thanks to all of you, and I'm looking forward to another four years. I have figured out what a county commissioner is, we are connectors. If I can't do something for you, I can connect you to somebody who can, and I've enjoyed doing that, I look forward to four more years of connecting. Thank you all so much. You get a picture with me. What about Jim and Jim? Jim, can you tell me, we get one too? Where's our other Jim?
He's over there.
Thank you. Thought you were with me. Thank you, Jim, appreciate it so much. Thank you all so much.
Commissioner Edmondson?
Yes, I bet you do.
All right, very good, thank you, Commissioner. Next, we're gonna have the oath of office for Alan Wheeler, and Judge Kobe Waddell is gonna administer the oath.
Good morning, or afternoon, all right. I, Alan Wheeler.
I, Alan Wheeler.
I, Alan Wheeler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Justice of the Peace.
Justice of the Peace.
Precinct One.
Precinct One.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my abilities.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Just want to say thank you, first of all, for everyone that actually stayed around this long. So thank you for that. While I'm not originally from Denton County, this has been my home since 2009, when I started as a prosecutor at the District Attorney's Office. I've built a practice for the last decade in this community. I love Denton County. Started my family here. So thank you for entrusting this to me. I want to say thank you to my wife, Erica, my awesome son Weston, and daughter Tierney, and my mom, Dawn. Fortunately, my dad couldn't be here. He passed away about two months before I decided to do this. But I did get to bring his Bible today, so that was pretty cool. So thank you all very much.
That's great. Next is Judge DiPiazza, and Commissioner Mitchell is going to administer the oath.
Hello. Good afternoon. This is such an honor, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, James, raise your right hand, DiPiazza.
I, James DiPiazza.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Justice of the Peace.
Of the Office of Justice of the Peace.
Precinct Two.
Precinct Two.
For Denton County of the state of Texas.
For Denton County of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So four years ago, I stood up here. Judge Holland swore me in, and I swore him in. And he held his grandson. And at that point in time, I had a future daughter-in-law. And I said, wouldn't it be great if I get a final term and I get to hold the grandchild for that? And so, there's a little prophecy there, I think, and I bless God for all that he's given me. This is my final term. It would be 20 years when I finish this one. I made a promise to y'all that I would do five terms if y'all kept me in. And so after this term, I'll be walking away. And I thank you for the support and everything that you've done for me during this time. And I hope that I can continue to support you in a great way as your Justice of the Peace. Thank you.
All right. Now for Justice of the Peace, Precinct Three, Judge James Kerbo. If Judge Kerbo has a ring to it, that's because he's a second-generation Judge Kerbo.
This is not my grandson.
All right, here we go. We'll come up here. All right, if you'll raise your right hand. I, James Kerbo.
I, James Kerbo.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Justice of the Peace.
Of the Office of Justice of the Peace.
Precinct Three.
Precinct Three.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the great state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge. All right, so first and foremost, all the glory goes to God, first and foremost. But, you know, without the support of my family, especially my wife, Jessica, this is our middle son, Riggs, and then the little one that I was holding in here was, we were expecting him in March when I got sworn in, in January 2019. So it's great to finally have him here. But with great, great folks like my parents who have a strong history of service, my father with the city of Lewisville, my mother here with the great Denton County for 20 years, it is absolutely an honor to have such a strong family, a strong foundation, in one of the great, the absolute greatest county in all of the great state of Texas. And I thank you all so much for your support, and I wish you nothing but the greatest for 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. All right, next is Judge Harris Huey, Precinct Four. Let's give him a big hand. All right, here we go. I, Harris Huey.
I, Harris Huey.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Justice of the Peace.
The Office of Justice of the Peace.
Precinct Four.
Precinct Four.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
It's an honor and privilege to serve the citizens of Denton County and especially Precinct Four. I'm totally grateful for another four.
All right, next is Judge Mike Oglesby. And administering his oath is going to be Judge Brody Shanklin.
Let you get your crew in here.
I'm going to say, give my tribe in here.
Yes, sir. Can't do it without them. If you'd repeat after me. I, Michael R. Oglesby.
I, Michael R. Oglesby.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of the Justice of the Peace.
Of the Office of Justice of the Peace.
Precinct Five.
Precinct Five.
For Denton County.
For Denton County.
Of the state of Texas.
The state of Texas.
And will, and will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Come here. There we go. This is my youngest grandson. He's also known as Taz, because he's always into everything, as we can see. I want to thank the voters of Denton County and give them the, giving me the responsibility to be your new judge in Precinct Five. Again, this is my third term. It's been a great ride. I've learned a lot, and I love everybody. I want to thank my wife, Renee, for being with me and supporting me, my sister Suzanne, who flew in from Florida to be with us today, my stepdaughter, Whitney, my stepdaughter, Amber, and their spouses. This is their children. This is Reed, or also known as Peanut. Also, I would like to give out a big shout to the nurses at St. Luke's Labor and Delivery that is watching on. My daughter is a labor and delivery nurse. She couldn't be here today, but she, they're watching through the cameras. So also, my stepson, Steven, and all the support that they, everybody's given me, it's been a privilege. Thank you.
He was eyeing that microphone. He's been good. He deserves some showtime. All right. Congratulations, Judge. Next, this is the oath of office for Judge Legg Blanca Oliver and her husband, Judge Chance Oliver, is going to administer the oath of office. I told you you would see her again today.
Thank you for lowering that mic for me just a little bit. All right, guys. Please raise your right hand. I, Blanca Oliver.
I, Blanca Oliver.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of Justice of the Peace, Precinct Six.
The duties of the Justice of the Peace, Precinct Six.
Of Denton County.
Of Denton County.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
All right, y'all stay here just a minute. Chance already introduced the kids. So this is Kennedy, Max's girlfriend. I want to introduce to you my brother Tony, his wife Andrea, Christian, and Melina, my mother, Blanca. She's, in our family, she's Big Blanca and Little Blanca. Blanca y Blanquita. My Tia Magge, my Tio Pedro, and my cousin Pete and his wife. I want to, also, I want to just say thank you, Commissioner Diane Edmondson, for talking about veterans. I want to thank you, Mica, for your future service. Mica signed with Detachment 28 and Embry-Riddle. He will be commissioned as a second lieutenant coming out of college. So thank you for your future service, Mica. I just want to thank everybody. My family's large, my community is large, my Denton County community is large. I just want to thank you so much for the opportunity. I am truly humbled. I am grateful. I believe I will be the very first female Latina judge of this court, and also the first naturalized citizen from Mexico. And for that, I just want to... So that is why I asked my mom to hold my Bible. This is truly historic. And so, just, you know, we came to this country when I was a little girl. So if you have big dreams out there, you know, do it big, echa leganas. The hardest, the best view definitely comes after the hardest climb. Thank you to all of you. I pray to make you proud.
Well, congratulations, Judge. All right, we have one more oath to administer. And she was not in the program because we'd already gone to print, but we're so excited. We have Evelyn Brooks, who is going to be our, yes. You'll come forward, Ms. Brooks. We're so excited. She is going to represent us at the Texas State Board of Education, District 14. And James Hutchins is going to administer her oath. So y'all, let's give her a big Denton County hand.
I would like my big family and friends. I have a lot of friends here today. I would love for you to come up here with us, too, if that's all right. And I, yes, I think we can fit. We can make it fit. Yes, we can. This was a joint effort. Thank you, Judge Eads. Thank you very much, Judge Eads. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Oath of office in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Evelyn Brooks.
I, Evelyn Brooks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the state of Texas State Board of Education.
Of the state of Texas State Board of Education.
District 14.
District 14.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this state.
Of this and of this.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. Thank you, we, the people. We, the people. Thank you very much for being here. I see all the young babies and the young children, and that's honestly what I'm here for. I am here for our future. And I thank you. I thank you for everyone who voted for me. I thank you for every supporter. I was so surrounded by love. And I'm excited about 2023. I'm excited about the term that God has allowed me, the honor of serving in. I will serve you. I will hear you. And I will carry your children's best interests with me to the State Board of Education. God bless you all, and thank you for being here. Let's do something great for our children. They deserve it.
All right. Well, congratulations to everyone. We do have some items still left on our agenda. Let's go to item two, which is our consent agenda. Members, are there any items you'd like to pull off the consent agenda? We have a motion for approval. A motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item 2A, approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. There's no action on item 2B, and item 2C is approval of payroll. Next, let's go to item 5A, approval of bill reports. Payments from CSCD, Community Corrections, TAIP, Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, VIT, interest, and DA forfeiture funds are presented for recording purposes only. We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. We have a motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 8A, report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, Judges Commissioners. We have a promotion in County Criminal Court number three, new hire in justice of the peace precinct one, rehire in justice of the peace precinct one, a new hire in juvenile probation, a rehire juvenile probation, two promotions in juvenile probations, one new hired communications officer in the sheriff's office, one new hired detention officer in the sheriff's office, and one promotion in the sheriff's office. That's all for this week.
All right, thank you. That is presented for recording purposes, and there's no action today. There'll be no action on 13A, there'll be no action. Let's go to 13B, approval of United Way of Denton County Incorporated funding request to fulfill allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-19 and any appropriate action. We do have a backup document from Ms. Don Combs, there a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll hold on item 13C. Let's go to 13D, approval amended requests from CRM Studios to film a television commercial in the Commissioner's courtroom and County Judge's office at the courthouse on the square on Tuesday, January 17, 2023, from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and approval for the Denton County Judge to sign the location agreement, release of liability for filming from CRM Studios and any appropriate action. Chair move for approval, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's, yes. I do not. I think they wanted to be successful, so. Yes. All right, before we go to executive session, let's go to item 17, community updates. We'll start with Commissioner Precinct One.
Thank you, Judge. I just want to say congratulations to everybody that got sworn in today. You take on a lot of time away from your family when you're an elected official, and I appreciate you serving the great, great people here in Denton County, and it's a sad day for me to lose Commissioner Merchant, but a wonderful day that we gain a new commissioner that's going to do a wonderful job as well, so you have big shoes to fill, but I know he'll do a wonderful job, so thank you all so much. Everybody have a happy, prosperous, healthy 2023. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Commissioner Falconer.
I just.
I'm gonna have to get used to that, so I'll just let you know.
Yes, that's right. Thank you, Judge. I just want to say Happy New Year to everyone, a special thanks to Commissioner Williams for helping me turn on my mic.
The little things, it's the little things.
Little things.
Turning it off is important, too, so.
Yeah, that's right.
It's equally important. I'll just say it, am I right, Mayor? Mayor? Some mayors in the room? Hot mics. Yes, Mayor Meek is nodding her head? Okay, go ahead.
That's it, thank you.
All right, good. All right, Commissioner Mitchell.
I just want to thank and welcome all the new elected officials, and thank their family for supporting them, and everyone in Denton County. I wish you a Happy New Years and a prosperous year all the year through. Welcome, Commissioner Falconer. We are glad to have you. Goodbye, sweetheart Ron. It's been a blessing to serve with you on the Commissioner's Court, and I know it will be a blessing to serve with you also, so come on in, get your feet wet, and we'll have some fun.
Let's dive in.
Perfect. Commissioner Edmondson.
Thank you, Judge. I'd like to echo what Commissioner Mitchell has said, but on top of that, I'd like to wish everyone a wonderful 2023, but especially, I'm grateful for TCU and its win. It was, I gotta tell you, that's my husband's alma mater, and we watched the game, and I thought they were going to lose there at the end, so it was an exciting game.
Oh, yeah, little faith.
But they pulled it out, so congratulations, horny toes.
Good. Are y'all talking football? This is dangerous, okay.
We're done, we're done.
We don't need to be talking football.
Well, I want to thank you, Commissioner, and I want to echo the comments about welcoming all the new officials and the returning officials. You know, I think that the returning officials are just part of our family. We're so excited to have them coming back, and also welcoming the new faces, and Kevin, we're excited to have you a part of our Commissioner's Court family. It is so weird to look out here, Ron, and see you sitting out there after all our 16 years. It's weird there, too. Speaking of families, I want to take a moment of privilege and give a big happy birthday to our oldest son Everett. Today's his birthday.
Happy birthday!
He was, he was born on January 1, Y2K. If y'all remember the Y2K figures that people had, well, Ginger was in labor as the world was continuing to move on, you know, as everybody was fearful of, so Everett, congratulations and happy birthday, 23, 23, and Caroline made her first appearance at a county courthouse in Ginger's belly when she was pregnant with her, showing up to, when I was first sworn in, remember that, y'all? So she was, she had the baby there, so it was great to fast forward 16 years, and you're leading the pledges of allegiance. It was kind of a special moment for dear old dad here, so. Anyway, we are gonna, there's no other comments. I would like to remind everybody the county has a holiday tomorrow, and so we're going to be observing New Year's Day tomorrow. Let's go to, we have just a few, we have just a couple of items on executive session. We are not going to take long. This is going to be a very short and brief executive session. We're going to come back and continue to host our guests. We've got a whole lobby full of people. Ron, if you don't mind, and team, going out and reminding people, we do have our refreshments over in the 2020 room. We'd love to remind them of that. So let's go to executive session, let's go to 15A, under Texas Government Code 418183F, close meeting deliberate information which is confidential under the Texas Disaster Act related to managing emergencies and disasters. Item 15B, under Texas Government Code 551074581, personnel matters affecting the county advisory body, close meeting deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a member of an advisory body to a Denton County Commissioner's Court appointee to the Denton County Emergency Services District, number one, and any appropriated action. And it is 2:32, and we're in executive session.